Hello and welcome, everyone, to this meeting of the South Kingston Town Council. It is Monday, January 28th. The time is 7:30. Our first order of business is the pledge to the flag. Please rise and join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, on the nation of God, in his resolve where we do the justice of our own.
Thank you. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Council President Collins.
Here.
Council Vice President DeCruz.
Here.
Councilwoman Kelso.
Here.
Councilman McAtee.
Here.
Councilman Viele.
Here.
All members present.
Before we get into the agenda, I'd like to entertain a motion to add a closed executive session. Do we need to...
I'll bring you through it. So, under the Open Meetings Act, you are allowed to add an agenda item, including a closed executive session for discussion purposes. You won't be able to take any action during that meeting. The motion that I would suggest is that you add to the agenda an item to convene to close executive session pursuant to 4246-5A1 relative to the individual's performance, character, or physical or mental health. The individual involved is Brian DeCruz, and statutory notice has been provided.
I think you have the wrong executive session that he wanted.
I don't... I think that it is to discuss the report that Rob produced, essentially.
Okay.
Is that the same motion?
That's what I thought it was.
Okay.
All right. So, someone needs to make that motion as I read it and second in a vote.
Do I hear that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
There we go. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. And that brings us to item number four, the approval of minutes of previous meetings. We have the work sessions of January 7th, January 14th, 2019, the regular session of January 14th, 2019, and the closed executive session of January 14th, 2019.
Motion to approve for A, B, and C?
Second.
So, moved. Any discussion on these? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously and brings us to the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda, item five.
Second.
So, moved. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously as well and brings us to licenses. 6A is a resolution granting a victhing and holiday sales license to XWA Entertainment doing business as Mama Phoenix Cafe at 99 Fortin Road in Kingston, subject to a compliance with wastewater requirements. Application by Michael Antonucci. Is Michael here? Or somebody? Come forward, state your name for the record.
Good evening. Michael Antonucci.
Welcome.
Thank you.
So, tell me a little bit about Mama Phoenix Cafe. I've never been. Sorry to say.
So, it's formerly Mia's Kitchen.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just taking ownership. She sold it and is moving down to Florida.
Do you plan to make any changes to the business?
No, sir. Just breakfast, lunch.
Any other questions? All right, very good. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve Agenda Item 6A.
Second.
So, moved. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. Good luck.
Good luck. Thank you very much.
6B is a resolution granting a dance license to Anchor Pete's LLC doing business as Anchor Pete of Kingston Road in Wakefield. Pete Triculus.
How are you doing, Hawaii?
Very good. How are you doing?
Not too bad. Pete Triculus, yep.
Welcome back.
I appreciate it.
So, yeah, tell us about the dance licensing.
Just trying to build the business up a little bit. It's been a little quiet on the weekends, and some of the locals asked me if I could bring some music, some, like, guy who played a guitar. And I came and applied to hopefully get a license and just get some music in there. And I'm thinking about bringing the games back because a lot of families want their, you know, they're asking me about the games that we had before. And hopefully, hopefully, that will work, you know?
Anybody have any questions?
Is there any change in your hours?
Right now, we're 11 to... We've been closing early, like, 9:00, 11 to 9:00, 11 to 10:00. Really gets quiet after 9:00, you know?
So, do you expect that to change with entertainment?
Only on the weekend, maybe we'll try until 11:00, 12:00. You know, I don't really want to go too late because I got to get up the next morning. And I don't want to be up there too late.
Do I hear a motion on this one?
I'll make a motion to approve item 6B.
Second.
All righty. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Good luck.
I appreciate it.
Dancing. All right, that brings us to our big public hearing tonight. This is a public hearing relative to the adoption of the proposed fiscal year 2019 to 2020 to 2024/2025 capital improvement program shown on Exhibit 1 attached to your agenda. Who would like to present on this from the town's perspective?
Probably makes sense to have Trish start us off.
Very good.
Actually, we're going to hold on this until the managers' report, and I would suggest that if the public wants to comment on the CIP, it makes sense.
All right. We did have a number of CIP work sessions. Maybe some of you attended. Perhaps you didn't make comments at those meetings that you want to make now about the capital improvement plan. This is really looking at the six-year plan, so planning document. Of course, the first year of it does get incorporated into our operating budget. But yes, if you have comments, please bring them forward at this time to state your name for the record.
Question I asked at some of the last meetings. Does our rating, does our bond rating, how does that come into play with this bond issue? And the rating agencies look at us from a standpoint of the total bond issue and not the reimbursement. But how is this going to play out?
So, yes, additional indebtedness will be considered by bond rating agencies, looking at our situation once we take on additional debt. It will affect our rating somehow, some way, whether it'll be enough of an impact to injure the rating. We don't believe so.
I suspect that'd be the case for every city and town in the state. That would be affected. There's a lot of borrowing for a lot of communities, no matter what they're putting in. The other thing I don't quite understand yet, is this a five-year incremental reserve, a maintenance reserve? Is it three-year? How is that going to play out?
To be honest with you, I don't know. If Trish, during her presentation, which will come up later tonight, I'll have that question posed to her so she can respond to your inquiry. Your question again is?
The maximum 3% escrow account for maintenance in the future. I didn't know if it was a five-year straight line up to it, build up from 1% to 3%. Is this here?
My understanding is that it starts at 1% and increases at increments of 0.5% up until it maxes out at that fifth or sixth year at the 3%. That is my understanding.
And I think I read that, too, Roy. I think it was a five-year move from that up to 3%. But I just didn't know if there's any concrete evidence from there. That's okay. We're still in, you know, learning about all of this. And have we at all figured out from Ride? Has anyone talked to Ride? Is this drop dead tomorrow that we have to approve what RGP gives us, gives to us? Do we have position in there? Is it going to be the dollar amount? Are they going to look at the 39 cities and towns for priority, which throws it all? Does anyone have a game plan here?
Mr. President, so, this is a question that's come up a lot recently. Folks want to know, do we really have to get the application in on the 15th? Is that the drop dead? And the answer we received recently from Ride at a meeting here at Wakefield Elementary three or four weeks ago was that they are on two timelines. They've got a deadline of February 15th and a deadline in September, I think it was September 15th. They are not saying that they think either one of those is going to receive preferential treatment. However, they note that things change. The legislature can change legislation, and could that happen, you know, between February and September? Of course, it could. It really is just a question of how much risk are we willing to take that the funding or the authority to enter into those agreements with the LEAs won't be there in September? So, the answer to the question is, it is a deadline. If we don't do the 15th, we have to wait until the 15th of September. Whether that's consequential is... It's really a question of wanting to see what's in the crystal ball. I mean, we don't know.
Those of us who aren't very good at math out there in the country, if you just read recent newspapers, Rogers High School, East Providence High, and Lincoln need approximately $320 million for all their new high schools. They're going to be running at about 70%, 75%. So, that uses up a quarter of a billion dollars. But it probably won't work that way, but no one can get a handle on this if you read the newspapers. And remember, there are 309 schools throughout the 39 cities and towns that put in, and using prevailing wage, you're probably looking at 3 billion plus. I just don't see how these numbers mesh. And I can't blame anyone here for not understanding, but understanding what we don't know out there in the country is a bear.
It is hard to know. And again, what Ride points out is that this isn't about the money that's available. It's about the authority to enter into commitments. If we get in and are approved in May or June of this year, we have a commitment from the state of Rhode Island to give us reimbursement. Now, I will point out that that commitment is contingent upon our actually demonstrating at the end of the construction that we've achieved all of the outcomes that we said we were going to achieve that trigger those bonus points. So, we get our 35% and the five here and the five there and the five here if we show at the end of construction we achieved the outcome we set out to achieve.
Now, does Ride have somebody? My last question, does Ride have someone that's going to be like a general contractor, reviewer? Do they have someone there that's going to say, yes, this is complete? Yes, this is what we expected?
There will be an evaluation by Ride at the end of the construction.
This is mostly to discuss the capital improvement program, just to let you know.
I was at that meeting also at Wakefield Elementary. What I got from that conversation and that day at that meeting was the entire school business authority office, all four people that make up that office, they were all there. So, what they said, from what I remember, was that this legislation isn't an entitlement legislation. So, if your city or town comes up with a good plan, that's approved after Phase 2, Smith Phase 2, then at some point in time during later in the year, you will get the okay back from them that you can then ask your legislators to start drawing up legislation for the bonding that would take maybe probably in November. But they also said that even if you delayed to the September 15th deadline, they would still approve the bond, your proposal in time for it to be, go to legislation for bonding this fall. So, it wouldn't be like if you waited to September 15th and you'd have to wait till 2020 to have your legislation come before your voters. But the other thing is, I feel a real... I felt a real... It's like this is like an artificial shove in the back from a couple of different places for us to get this thing in by February 15th, which I still today, and I'm going to speak about it more tomorrow night, but I think this, we can't, we're not ready for February 15th in any way, shape, or form. But I'm here, I'm feeling it from the, from RGP, you know? They'll say stuff like, you know, we'd really like, we'd really like to design you guys a whole new high school or a big, brand-new, all addition, you know, like a two-third addition to the high school instead of just a renovation. But, you know, then they go to the, well, you don't know if the money's going to be there in the fall. Now, the people from the School Building Authority that night, that day, didn't say that at all that I remember. They, you know, yeah, this is Rhode Island, and we do have a $200 million deficit, you know, whether it's going to be made up by legalized marijuana or whatever, who knows? But the $250 million bond that was passed this past November, that locked in, what that did, that locked in the 5% increments that you can gain in the bonuses. That's what that legislation was for. So, that's already been passed. And remember, and I had this wrong in the beginning, it's not like every, you know, let's say there are, let's say there are 10 towns and cities and towns, they all want to build a new high school. So, it's $100 million apiece. That's a billion dollars, right? That billion dollars is, doesn't have to be, doesn't have to appear in, you know, in Ride's pocket on day one because what, they're only paying their percentage. So, in our case, you know, the least we could get is 35, the most we're going to get is 52 and 1/2. But after the building is finished and completed and they sign off on it, from that time forward, they pick up their share of that cost. They're not giving you the $100 million. They're just giving you their share of every monthly payment on the bond. So, let's say the, let's say the bond is for $4,008,000. So, every month, you'd be in the, you'd have to pay 200... My brain's fried. $4,000,000 every 12, $400,000. So, I think, I think. So, every month, you'd have to pay $400,000 on the debt. So, when Ride kicks in there, so let's say, let's say it's a 50/50. So, you send up to Ride $200,000, and they put in their $200,000 for the $400, and the payment goes in. So, they're not coming up with $100 million. They're only coming up with those, their shares. So, that's why they can, that's why they say they have money for all the districts. And they also said that over time, you know, over these 20 some years, that these bonds will be in circulation. If extra monies are needed to make sure that they're all covered since they're entitlements, the legislature would, I would think, would then float another bond, you know, referendum to, you know, to cover whatever we needed.
Thank you. That's, I think, very helpful. Any comments on the capital improvement program?
Councilman Kenny Burke here tonight on behalf of the Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. As the town manager had mentioned earlier this evening, we did hold a meeting weaving our BPAC committee earlier this month, and we discussed, in addition to the long-range goals that we have to do a strategic master plan for the entire town, actually working with the budding communities for bicycle and pedestrian access, we wanted to assess and actually complement the ongoing capital improvement program through the Department of Public Services, really focusing on small, very discreet, but helpful projects that could make a meaningful impact in neighborhoods where people are generally raising issues to our collective attention, either through councilors, through the Transportation and Traffic Advisory Committee. We believe that there's an opportunity for our group to get together and, as the town manager had mentioned, do somewhat like a mini transportation improvement plan, do some pretty extensive outreach, work with neighborhood groups, listen to the folks that are experiencing these issues that are, as we've talked about, they're systemic and sometimes they're their own neighbors that are causing some of the traffic concerns, and come up with a list, not exhaustive, but it expected to be a very long list of concerns. The idea is that we would potentially ask the council for some seed money, things that we could do, certainly within a year. We're not looking for very large projects. But we'd like to start off asking for about $20,000, a suggestion, it could be operating, it could be the real estate transfer tax, but $20,000 to put towards local transportation improvement projects. Could be striping, it could be some solar power and LED lighting at a crosswalk, it could be the little green guys that go out in existing crosswalks. It could be striping or signage that supplements John Chalk's existing paving programs. So, that's the nature of our request, and we'd appreciate your consideration.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I started one thought there toward the end, and I didn't finish it. So, I feel that there's some push in town, maybe from the people that decided they wanted to go from option A to B to A, back to A to keep Wakefield open. It may be that they feel like if we don't get this thing in by February 15th, that, you know, people are going to be changing their minds again. And so, I don't think that's the case personally, but on the consultant side, on RGP's side, for some reason, Mr. DeQuatro seems, continues to say, you know, yo, you could wait till September, but if I was, you know, you never know in Rhode Island, kind of thing. I hope it's not because they don't get paid until Phase 2 gets submitted, because that would be, and I think that's something that the, that the town council and the school committee should check on. You know, if it's because how the contract's written until Phase 2 gets submitted and accepted by Ride, they don't get a chunk of money. Well, if they have to wait from February 15th to September 15th, well, then that would be an issue, right? If you're running a business, I'm sure. But maybe if that is in fact the case, there's some way around that so that, you know, they could be paid some portion of it. But still, if we decide to wait till September 15th, you know, to make the plan better or whatever, then we could do that.
Comments on the capital improvement program up here?
I'm a little confused. Is the public hearing going to stay open?
Were we getting a presentation?
I'd like to hear Trish as well.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
Are we getting a presentation before the public hearing is over, or?
We can do a presentation which describes the impact of the debt portion, the long-term debt portion. The capital budget isn't impacted by that because, as you know, the capital budget is for this fiscal year.
Okay, that's fine.
Do you want to proceed? Do you want to?
Yeah, that's fine. No, I'm glad to hear that part during the manager's report. That's fine. I thought there was other. So, to clarify then, what we're approving tonight is year one of the six-year plan?
That's correct.
So, you know, as we went through the work sessions on the capital improvement plan, this is a year where we've been very conservative with the dollars, just level funded from last year, except for one minor change. I can't remember off the top of my head.
The assessor is set aside for revaluation. And the amount, it was not a small amount, $100,000, that one piece. We cannot mess with, though.
So, I felt like this is a pretty prudent budget, the way.
Yeah, so, you know, based on the six-year plan, obviously, there's, the debt plays a big role in our liability. The 1920 year of this capital improvement plan is real solid to me. Level funding on the town side, you know, not dramatic spending on the school side. I think it's a good first year of a six-year plan. I do have some concerns going further out, but...
Another clarifying, we need to basically approve this capital improvement first-year budget tonight.
Yes.
Yeah, tonight. February 1, I think, is the deadline.
That's correct. And the, I want to make sure that I'm not misstating this either, Joe. What you're approving is the capital budget, which is that first year. But we're also saying this is our plan going forward, knowing that we can change.
Right. But we know typically the five remaining years do change.
That's correct.
So, any other comments on this? If not, I'm happy to entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
So, moved. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. And do I hear a motion on 7A?
I'll make a motion to approve 7A.
Okay. So, moved. Any discussion this time? All right. Well, I want to thank all the department heads for being so forbearant with, you know, I know there's stuff out there to do, but it is prudent for us, so I'm happy to vote for this. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. Brings us to number eight on the agenda, communications. The first communication is dated January 11th, 2019, from Stephanie Kanter, Chairwoman of South Kingston School Committee, requesting that the town council delay any interim or final expansion of the Kingston Hill Academy until certain conditions are met, and requesting that a copy of this correspondence be forwarded to the zoning and planning boards. It's been received and placed on file. What do we want to do with it? That's the question. And just before we get to that, do we have oversight over this Kingston Hill Academy?
So, the planning board would review a expansion plan. Beyond that, it's really, it's the regulations and statutes that apply. There's no sort of discretionary authority or power over this particular applicant or any other for that matter. Have they filed an expansion plan? I believe they have. Yes.
And I think it's been heard by the planning board and approved?
Yeah, come on up.
Yeah, come on up.
Hi, Chelsea Severt, Planning Director. So, Kingston Hill Academy filed for development plan review with the planning board, advisory to a new special use permit, which goes to the zoning board. The planning board approved the development plan, it's on, I believe, for this next coming zoning board agenda for the special use permit.
Thank you. So, the communication was a little bit confusing to me, and it also references that they should have been afforded the opportunity to participate. Now, I believe the superintendent is notified, and there was a public hearing, so everybody had an opportunity.
There was no public hearing.
So, the superintendent is actually an ex officio member of the planning board, she gets all of the agendas and minutes, and literally every email that we send to the planning board goes to her. There will be a public hearing on the special use permit, but the planning board's review was not a public hearing.
Okay, it was just an agenda item?
Correct.
Okay. I think.
So, it would make sense per chance to just respond to this communication by offering them the opportunity to go and, you know. Makes sense. All right, so do I hear a motion on this item?
Excuse me, don't mean to interrupt, but that was very confusing. Is the school planning on moving all the way up to an eighth grade of teaching in classrooms? Are they currently five? Where are they now? This is, this is very hard to interpret.
Do you remember from their application that they don't have a kids' center?
I mean, I can sort of see the concern about new population coming in, I don't know if they, right, one of those schools ends at grade five, I believe, and I don't know if they made application with the state, who they have to, to go to grade eight, but I just, I mean, you don't know from this.
I will point out that we don't have any, at the local level, any authority to decide what population they can serve. Our concern is, does their septic system meet the standard?
Right.
Is there safe access and egress onto the property? It's the zoning stuff, it's.
I certainly understand that, and all these schools are an auction program for Washington County, how many kids from each town and city can go there, so it's a fair balance, depending on whatever ratios they use, but this was confusing. If the school's already eight grades, or they're five, need more space to go up to eight, I just, I can't figure it out. Thank you. Yeah, but, I mean, there's, again, we don't have the right to limit, except for these conditions, and, I mean, they're a public charter school, so.
So, I will say this, I am concerned, and, you know, we haven't done anything here that has intervened in any, any way that is inappropriate, their application has been handled like every other application, as it should be. They are an applicant before the planning board, and now before the Board of Zoning Review. They have all of the rights and all of the prerogatives that exist for any applicant coming looking for a special use permit, or for any other zoning relief. They've been afforded those rights, and we're not intervening because of the nature of the business that they're engaged in.
Good evening.
Welcome.
I miss you guys. My name is Meg Haley, and I live here in South Kingston. I have no problem with the request from the charter school, Kingston Hill Academy, but I think the public needs to have a right to know a little bit more about this request. Thirty people increase is certainly going to weigh on our town dollars to, I'm sorry, this is terrible, it's going to weigh on our town dollars to support more students, and that's going to be, again, less aid to us, but I would like to know more about this expansion, and when I can come to the planning board meeting to see what actually is going to be going on, that's important to me. Thank you.
All right.
I think we need to look at this like we'd look at Monsignor Clark or Prout applying for expansion of space. We wouldn't, it's the same dynamic, we wouldn't be able to say to Prout or to Monsignor Clark, no, I'm sorry, you can't build another classroom. We would say to them, you need to go through the proper channels, and that's planning and then zoning, and I think that's what this academy has done, so, as far as the town's job here, our job here is to make sure that planning and zoning have done their job, and it seems as though they're doing it.
I think you're right. So, do I hear a motion on this item? Motion to put it on file.
I'll make a motion that we put this on file.
Second.
All right. Perfect. Thank you. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. And that brings us to 8C, it's a communication, January 13th, 2019, from June Cerito, requesting the town council to approve Ride Two Stage Two application as submitted by the building committee. We've received it, placed on file, what do we want to do with it? We can.
Can I ask a question? So, I'm a little, I'm new here, so I'm a little confused as to, we take the email report as a bulk and accept it, right, and, but the written communications are handled differently, is that what I'm understanding? So, this is a written communication, and that's why it's before us, and the email report is just given?
Yeah, the history of that is, goes past, beyond my time, but yes, written communications have always been dealt with as correspondence. We have attempted over the last year to deal with emails in a couple of different ways. We dealt with emails at one point essentially as we deal with correspondence now, and they just were so voluminous that it wasn't all that manageable. The email report now has the list by subject of the emails, so that anyone who wants to take the email off the consent agenda, or pull it out and deal with it specifically, can. Correspondence have always been handled this way, and if the council would like to change that, they can do it.
I think it's time to look at that. If we're going, emails to me are, have the same weight as written correspondence now, I don't think there's a difference, how the mail is delivered.
They're weightier.
Correct, they cost more, but how the mail is delivered to us, I think, is irrelevant at this point in, in time, and perhaps we should look at all correspondence as one block.
We can take that up at some point. June isn't here by any chance, is she? Okay, so, I would entertain a motion to place this on file, unless there's any.
Motion to place on file.
Second.
So, moved, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries unanimously. 8G is a communication from Ken Burke, co-chairman of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, requesting that financial assistance he just spoke of, for $20,000 for projects to be determined that will enhance the mission of the committee, to make South Kingston safer for pedestrian cyclists and wheelchair users. I think he may have said what he needed to say. So, I would entertain a motion to place this on file, maybe forward it for when we're discussing, you know, these type of requests for the operations budget work session.
Can I comment on this quick?
Sure.
So, I would just like to say, I know Ken Burke's not here right now, but I appreciate the work and effort by the pedestrian, sorry, Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee, I think they're about to dive into matters that are of great importance to a lot of people in SK, something that we've kind of looked away from for a while, and I think it's important that they're looking into it, however, I understand he's coming to us for an ask of money, and I think he understands, I think the committee understands, that in order for us to be willing to authorize that amount for that committee to spend, they need to come to us with a fine-tuned plan, a list of neighborhoods, and different projects in which they're going to spend the monies, but I do like to, I'd like to express my appreciation for the fact that they are looking into this and wanting to express interest in moving forward. So, this is something that is good, and I think the council should be excited about, but I just wanted to let that known, that, you know, specifics are important, and we can't just hand away money, and I think Ken knows that, and I think Rob asserted that earlier, but I'd just like to make that known.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to place it on file and address it when we address the operational budget, and have, give Ken the opportunity and his committee to come forward with a plan.
Second.
Very good. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Communication H was received January 24th, 2019, from Kate Brewster, Executive Director of the Johnny Cake Center, informing the town council of the Johnny Cake Center response for those in need affected by the government shutdown, which has ended temporarily, perhaps. What do we want to do with this one?
I think we'd like to stay in touch with Kate Brewster and see when and if the food drive has been announced. I don't know that I saw it, but if it is, maybe the town could boost its visibility by putting it on the website or the town Facebook announcements, and we could try to help as best we can with, with the need. I'm concerned about the SNAP benefits, I'm concerned about that extra 10 days that folks are expected to stretch their SNAP benefits for, they got them early, I'm concerned about that, and I think we could play a role in trying to alleviate some of the pain.
I agree with you.
All right, maybe a motion to place this one on file as well.
Make a motion to place item H on file, but to offer any assistance from the town that we can offer in terms of making sure that people know that there's a food drive, and that's it.
I'll second that.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries unanimously. Now, that brings us to comments from interested citizens. I'd first like to just wish a happy birthday to Billy Forbes behind the camera, doing such a good job for us. Meg, of course, brought that to us.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Bill. All right, so, yeah, this is your opportunity, come up to the podium, please state your name for the record, let us know what you're thinking.
You're Mo Neil, Matunik. I just heard tonight, I think Mike and the manager mentioned that the, this issue with Bryant is going to be discussed at an executive session later this evening. All I know from reading the public, coming to the last meeting, is that you gathered, I think the words were, you gathered the number of complaints, you were going to be in touch with the council, and I assume Mike Osillo too, and the Ethics Commission, or who else was involved with this decision-making that will be privately talked about this evening?
Nothing with the Ethics Commission.
Okay, so just the council manager and yourself? Okay. Does this take the public out of this issue? Is this just going to rest and end this evening, or is it just going to fester for weeks and months to come? Where does the public stand on this? Does this end tonight with a decision? Will we know what the decision is?
No, no decisions can be made tonight, because this matter was added to the council agenda.
That's what I thought.
So, there's no decisions at all. So, they can talk about what the manager has provided to them, but they would have to put this on a subsequent agenda to take the action.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Hi, Roland Benjamin. Couple of quick notes, the comments on the, on the charter school discussions, I was, I was at the committee meeting when they deliberated how to write that letter and how to ask. It's a little concerning, just sort of the tone that I, that I heard from that meeting, which was, really, the intent was to protect this number of students in our district, in effect, taking a choice away from some of these students, that almost was the intent, my perception, you can take it for what it's worth. Then I just want to add, I'll speak again tomorrow with some more of this, and I'd be happy to answer any questions personally, if you have any questions on my own historical insight, because I was involved with some of the original discussions on this facility plan. I'm going to go back to what I've been able to see from what's available publicly on the presentations that you'll be seeing from RGB tomorrow. We're basically looking at decisions from outside and inside that have taken, you've seen my letter on this, we've added over $40 million of burden to the local taxpayer over the life of the bonds that we're considering. I want, I really want you to take that into consideration as you go ahead and look at the Stage Two application, and talk about the limits of what we're bonding. We're one of the highest per capita, per student school districts in Southern New England, that's our size. One of the higher ones that was out there was Westerly, and they struggled in 2016 to actually move forward any kind of capital planning. We've got a lot on the table right now, a lot of things have changed, we're talking about a different, shifting around up to 40,000 to 50,000 square feet worth of renovations that has changed. We put a plan together with community input, thousands of people from the community, that came up with ultimately this plan that was available. Since then, we've, it's changed, and it wasn't as simple as saying, let's keep one school open. We've changed the scope of the projects of each school. More importantly, we've actually limited, I think there's a total of about, somewhere in the neighborhood of 30,000 fewer square feet being renovated for $10 million more money. That's, that's the kind of thing that's happened when you try to compress this all in a two-month period, so I want you to be thinking about that, not that you're not, I know that you are, you're taking this very seriously, and I appreciate it, I appreciate the, the analysis that was public from the town manager, but it's a, it's a big numbers that have really changed in the last couple of months, and I hope we can not just say it was 75 million before and it's 75 million again, but thanks.
Good evening, Jonathan Daly LaBelle. One, I just wanted to, I appreciate hearing about the wanting to support Johnny Cake and people being pinched on the SNAP benefits, it's very real, and, you know, I know this is just a town meeting, but, you know, at the national level, here we are with the people who are at the lowest rung of the economic spectrum are getting pinched and pinched and pinched, and now, the Republican Party is coming out saying we may just, they want to phase out the entirety of the estate tax, which at this point is such a large exclusion that would just benefit the 2,000, I think that's what I read, the 2,000 richest people in the country are the richest families. So, I, you know, and that, those decisions impact these conversations. Why is this such a difficult budget challenge? It's because, I mean, look at that mismanagement, where's the priority? So anyways, I appreciate the, trying to help people out that need it. On the Kingston Hill Academy, I mean, I think where that's kind of important to always bring forward, even though it's really more of a process at this point, because decisions were made, but I think it's important to bring it out every so often, because two charter, we have a very good school system, we have a very strong, and even with that being the case 20 years ago, or whatever it was, the people who were running things at that time thought it would be acceptable to have two charter schools in South Kingston, and so, of course, when people are given a choice, some people are going to take that choice, and it's not really necessarily to say that they shouldn't have that choice, but when you make it that convenient for people, a lot of people are going to take the choice, and then there's a budget consequence. were made, but I think it's important to bring it out every so often because two charter, we have a very good school system. We have a very strong, and even with that being the case 20 years ago, or whatever it was, the people who were running things at that time thought it would be acceptable to have two charter schools in South Kingstown. And so of course, when people are given a choice, some people are going to take that choice. And it's not really necessarily to say that they shouldn't have that choice, but when you make it that convenient for people, a lot of people are going to take the choice, and then there's a budget consequence. I don't know what it was, 10 years ago, 12 years ago, when Dr. Hicks was around, he had done an evaluation that for every student that leaves the district, the district actually only gains half of the efficiency. So at that time, you know, maybe the cost of the student was 14,000 or 15,000, now it's around 19,000. So every student that leaves with that funding is, goes with the student, the district doesn't save all of that. You don't eliminate a position just because one student leaves. So I think in the context of that coming forward from the school committee, I think it's important for the town council to kind of think about, well, when we have this enrollment decline, why do we have that enrollment decline? And part of it is because there's so much choice. And now there's more choice. You know, the market, people who are in power want people to be able to have freedom to choose, and that freedom to choose is expensive. There's a cost to it. And ultimately, I think we've seen, people don't really want to pay for that. So, I mean, that's not surprising, right, with the American people? You know, they want, they want to have the cake and eat it too. So, but it is important to kind of keep those things in mind. So with the, and talking about the enrollment decline, a lot of this does relate to the cost of housing. It does relate to decisions made by decision-makers going back 20, 30 years. There has been encouragement of housing over 55, you know, for people who are over 55, complexes, developments where children are not allowed. So I know we have a demographic situation in the country, in the state, in the South Kingstown, but that's been a piece that, you know, has slowed down the growth. So I guess I would request of these decision-makers, it seems like the last couple of election cycles, people are talking about wanting to address the issue of affordable housing and having more families and keeping the families who we have. And that's part of the enrollment decline. So as you're making deliberations, I really sincerely ask, well, is your focus on creating more housing, having more housing that's affordable, having more housing that will be available for families to live here with children? And if the answer's no, which kind of, in a way, not entirely, people take this out of context, I know, because this is what happened to me when I brought it forward 10 years ago, but if the answer's no, then, you know, just keep closing the schools up, because we won't need them. But if it is a priority to have families in town, young children, hopefully increase diversity, then really think about what is being brought to you, what plan is being brought to you. Because we may need those schools to educate the children if, in fact, South Kingstown is going to put their money where their mouth is and support that type of housing. I guess the last thing on the charters, I think there has been a lack, I'm thinking back some years, it was kind of, it seemed like there was a lack of oversight by the state agencies as to how the charters were managing the buildings, the lottery system, those types, those types of things. So I think that's some of the concern, is that making sure that the town is aware of what's happening, because the state hasn't always lived up to its end of the bargain on that. Thank you.
Doral Beasley. So I'm going to save most of my stuff for tomorrow night. I'm going to be presenting some facts tomorrow night, and maybe have some heads exploding in this room. So during this whole process of the building renovations, fixing our schools, keeps going back to this report that Riot had done by Jacobs Engineering out of Boston. Now, for some reason, RGB, they talk about that report like, well, it's, at one point they said, at one meeting, they said, well, it's like they flew a plane over and then they, they had all these things, and then they just, you know, they did the whole state, so it was kind of like, it wasn't that thorough. Okay? But I tell you what, if anybody's actually looked at it, I mean, there's picture after picture after picture of all our buildings and things in them that are, that are wrong now. So here we are, we've gone from option B to option A. So what did that do? It's keeping Wakefield School open, and it's reducing the amount of money that we were going to put into our four elementary schools to almost a pittance. Now, I'm going to tell you how bad the pittance is. So as of, as of right now, in the worst-case scenario, it is West Kingston. And RGB's plan, as the one that they showed us last week, for every, every elementary school is going to get a $750,000 lump sum of money. Now, what that $750,000 is, that is the amount of money that they're going to put into billing to create 21st century spaces. So how many are they going to create in each of those four elementary schools? Two. So in each school, you'll have two rooms, which they took a wall down between two old classrooms, made it a bigger one. They'll put a whiteboard in there, and some new furniture, and I don't know what else, some better lighting, okay? All right. So they're going to do that in the four schools. So in those four schools, you'll have two rooms in each school that's 21st century. All the rest of the building is what it was, when it was built 50, 60 years ago. But in West Kingston, so on top of the 750,000, they have, they call it RGB High Priority Items Allowance. So for West Kingston School, they have $295,000. All right. So what's, what's that going to do for West Kingston? Well, West Kingston doesn't, so there are five priority character, five priority columns in the Jacobs Report, and then the six columns is for, over the five years, over the next five years, other things will be, need to be fixed or upgraded in these same schools. So it's like a five-year facility index lifecycle addition. So there are no priority ones, which is like the most critical things to a school. So no, no priority ones for West Kingston. All right. But in the priority two category, they had almost $2 million worth of category twos. Now, RGB, all this whole night, last 13 months, they've told, they told the building committee and the school committee over and over and over, that they were going to take care of the priority ones and priority twos in all our schools. Okay? Well, that's a lie. Because if you subtract 295,000 out of the 2 million in priority twos that West Kingston needs, you have 100, $1,635,000 worth of priority twos that they're not going to touch. And that's also the same case for Wakefield, and almost as bad, not so bad in Wakefield, but almost as bad as Mattoonik. And it gets worse as you go down into the threes, the fours, and fives. Basically, our elementary schools are getting squat. Now, I did a rough calculation in the last 24 hours, and I hope I'm right, but I'm thinking pretty sure I'm right. 27 people today work in Wakefield School, 27 employees. This year's school budget for compensation benefits, anything that has to do with compensating people that work in our school system, is $48,500,000. And this year, unbelievably, we have 485 employees total. So I went to the South Kingstown Schools, even I can make this calculation. You divide 485 into 4, $48,500,000, you get $100,000. So you can say roughly, every, you can say, on average, every employee in our, in our district this year, on average, getting $100,000, salarying benefits, pension, all of it, healthcare. So those 27 employees in Wakefield School, now, so this project, we're going to bond, you're going to, we're going to put bonds in for 20 years, 20-year bonds, for these renovations in our schools, fixes. So we would expect that for these buildings will be open for 20 years. So if we're going to put the money in these buildings, we would want them open for the 20 years, or otherwise, why would we put any money into them? So if you take 27 employees, times 100,000, that's 2.7 million. Now, I compounded that for 20 years, 2.7 million compounded, for 2% a year, just, you know, I didn't go out of my mind, 2% a year. First year, 2%, 2%, 20 times. At the end of that, when you add up all those 20 years' worth of compensation benefits, your number is $69 million. Now, on top of that, of course, you've got to have the building, you have the building, you can do stuff with the building. So I took all of this year's outlays in every category for if they were student, if they were student-driven, you know, like textbooks and stuff like that, or if they were facility-driven, like your electricity and all that stuff, or if they were employee-driven, like other employees, like your nurses and all that other stuff, so other employee kind of stuff. So when, so then I had, so then I made calculations like, all right, it says 27 employees out of 485, so you divide 485 into 27, you get a little number, little, little percentage. You do the same thing for 176 students this year, out of 2,978, you get a little percentage, and you have 34,004 square feet out of, I can't remember that number, it's like 600-some-thousand square feet of buildings that we have open this year. So all those percentages, actually, pretty interesting, they're all between like 5% and 6%. So then I multiplied all those other categories by those differentials to see how much, on average, that Wakefield School will get. And then when you take that number, and you do it to the time of 20 years, it's another 15 million. So keeping Wakefield School open for the next 20 years is going to cost the town, cost the town, the taxpayers, pretty close to $84 million. Now, we don't need that school. We don't need that school open, and we're drowning in employees. So tomorrow night, I'm going to come up with more facts to you, but we better figure this out. You're not, if keeping that school open is, to me, is tantamount to fiscal malfeasance.
Thank you. Jim, did you already speak it?
Yes, I was waiting for all this information on the topic.
Yeah, I was just wanting to see if any...
Yep, I looked around. I didn't see any...
Yeah, no, I know. I just, sometimes people take their time.
Thank you. No, thank you. Jim O'Neill again. I had the interesting pleasure last week of attending the Narragansett Town Council meeting regarding the library situation. All the anti-rooms were used, so on and so forth, and it was a vigorous debate, I must say. I wish I could remember the Supreme Court Justice that talked about free speech and vigorous debate. Michael, maybe you can remember. I remember who it was, but anyway. And one of the major arguments was, the voters approved this years ago with a 68% majority. Huge number, 4,400 against 2,000. And very impressive number. I won't go into the details. I won't go into some of the slander and other things that came out at the meeting, but on the most part, everyone was well-behaved, but it was a vigorous debate, about four hours' worth, and it's good to see democracy work that way. But those in attendance, except for, I think, two folks that spoke with the majority three to two, to sell the building and not adhere to the voters' cares, concerns, and overriding a majority vote, more than two to one, to buy that piece of property from Gilbane in the middle of the, if you will, town there, and move forward with the library. So a lot of disappointed folks. I think there's some filings going forward, but maybe things will take place in the next election. I don't know. But it brings me back to our town here. And I'm very, very concerned about what I hear from friends on commissions and boards, even developers in the real estate business, my land trust friends. And I'm really concerned, because, Rob, this involves the, our planning department, because I hear it everywhere, all the time, that open space, our $2.3 million we still have authorized by the voters, don't bother to ask us. We're not going to give you any, 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 any of our interest towards approving any issues that may come towards us. We have too much open space, is the other comment, so on and so forth. And why the library thing came up in Narragansett is because in South Kingstown, in four separate elections, 2002, 2004, 2006, 80%, 80% was the average. That's almost statistically impossible with just people who automatically say no. 80%. Look at the bond issue just passed last November, the $250 million bond issue, which we'll be drowning in, trying to figure out over the years. Darn, about 76.5%. Unbelievable. URI got about 15 points less than that. But guess who came out on top again? Open space, clean air, clean water. It always comes out on top because of what's make, makes people feel good, makes communities feel good, makes everything else work. Really does. So here we are, close to 80%, and I just hear this all the time, and from the director, from the planning director. And I hear it from many sources. And Rob, I think even a couple folks that told me they heard it from you too, and I can't tell you the exact words, but it is in regards to the $2.3 million that we have. And I wish this council would realize, and I wish the people in this community would realize, it's the reason we all live and work in this community, and why we came here, those of us that haven't been here for hundreds of years. It's because we do everything right here, from villages, the university, our schools, open space, coastline. We do everything right here. All the previous councils, Republican, Democrat, Independent, unanimous supporting open space. Farms, clean water, clean air, unanimous. You cannot have anything but neutrality in a planning department when it comes to this issue. This is about our policy we made, comprehensive plan we've made. This is what makes South Kingstown an exciting, exciting place for folks to live, stay, and to keep our seniors here, too. It's an incredible legacy. Actually started with Steve Alfred. I guess Steve was here for 40-some-odd years. Go back to Tony Corrello, Barbara Hackey, and Polly Eddy. Oh, gosh, who else? Karen Asher, Anna Prager, Meg Healy, along with Kathy Fogarty and Carol McInty, the conveyance tax, all of it. They were, everybody on board unanimously with this, these issues we bought and this money we raised. So I am greatly concerned, and I don't believe we can have an employee of this town, unelected, making those statements in the public, and they're from many, many sources. Thank you. Thank you. I'd expect to come back up here. I guess, Jim, this is where you and I part ways. Around 1970, because I did all this research at the Beestow Library on the old microfilms, this is around 1970, I think at that time, the council was Republican, you know, Republican majority, but I'm not 100% sure. But the town, right after World War II, population in South Kingston was just around 10,000. And in the ensuing 20 years, between like 1950, 1970, it, it expanded to like 16,000. So there were people in town, they were panicking, you know, they were saying, gee, if you look at that kind of growth, you know, we're doomed, you know, we're going to end up like Warwick and all those other places we don't want to be like. So there were like a five-year period where they talked about this in town, different town councils, and what they decided to do, this is just before Steve Alfred was, was appointed, it wasn't his era yet. Was the guy's name Connor? Connor? Was that, was he, was he the town manager? So anyway, so what they decided was, they had to figure out a way to slow the growth down, because they didn't want to turn out like Warwick, so what they did was, they upzoned the entire town, so, I don't know exactly, but, you know, if it was an R10, now it's a 20, 20 to 40, 40, you know, so they made, they upzoned the town, vast areas of the town were upzoned. And so they tried that for about maybe half a decade, and it was still, the growth was still coming hard and fast, so that wasn't enough. So they asked our state, our legislators for some, from assistance up in Smith Hill. So they got them to write legislation that capped the number of single, single-family home permits that was, that could be issued every year, I think it was 350. So for another period of years, you know, you had that cap going, so you had to upzone town, you'd have that cap. Then in 1983, the South Kingston Land Trust was formed. Now, the South Kingston Land Trust has done fabulous things in this town, I'm not going to say they have not, one of the ones is they took over property up in Kingston, right near, down the street where I live, used to be owned by the Kingston Improvement Association, it's the Biscuit City Pond thing, they've done beautiful work down there, new trails, it's gorgeous. But somewhere along the way, I think this land trust diverted a little bit, because initially, well, from what I remember from its creation days, they were going to protect lands that were habitat kind of property, or protecting aquifers, I think that was their main thrust in the beginning. But over time, they've come into this process where they, where they buy farmland. Okay, but what happened over the next 40 years, from 1976 till today, well, it actually didn't take that long, it started around the year 2000. Our, our public school in Roma started to crash, and it's crashed hard. We've had the highest decline in public school in Roma in Rhode Island. There's not even a town, another town is even close. And that's, that's coming at a real cost to this town, and the cost is this. If you look at the per capita, if you look at the per student, the per student cost in Rhode Island, we are number five now. I discount places like James, you know, Jamestown and New Shore, you know, Block Island, those places, you can't really put them in there, because they're, the communities are so small, they don't have high schools, well, anyway, so, so we're number five, real city and town, we're number five now. And this year, we're, now, we're over $20,000 per student. Okay, now, if Barrington, I know that people hate me because I keep bringing Barrington up, but Barrington, East Greenwich, North Kingston, Cumberland, Smithfield, they're all, they're all, even this year, they're all educating their kids around 15, between 15, $16,000 a kid. Now, some of those towns have also had declines in their, in their student population, but I'm getting back to the funding formula, the funding formula. We complain all the time in South Kingston that the funding formula screws us, but actually it's not. We, we, we're sowing what we've reaped, or we've reaped what we've sowed. And here's why. We haven't, we haven't maintained, we haven't maintained our eyeball on how much we're paying per student. We have too many employees in this town working for the school department, that's the bottom line. When Broadrock, right after Broadrock was opened, I think the, the school employment population was up in the 600s, and we had 4,400 kids in the, in the system. Well, this year, we have 29, almost 3,000, it's going to go down to like 28 in another four, but another six years or so. But our employment levels haven't kept up with that decline in, in enrollment. So now we have six employees, six students for every employee. Towns like Barrington, they're like eight and a half employees for every student. North Kingston has eight employees for every student. So we have this collective employees, and it's kept our per cost, per student, really high. Because when you look at the funding formula, over these last, since 19, 2012, when this, doing this formula, first year this formula was implemented till today, Barrington's, Barrington's reimbursement from RIDE has gone up. The wealthiest town in Rhode Island, they're getting more money. East Greenwich, they're getting more money. But even the towns that population, their population has declined, are getting almost the same money as 2012, and you know why? Because they kept their costs down. In 2007, Deborah Gish came down to this town and had a conversation with the school committee and the school, and the town council, about, you know, the things they're trying to do up in Providence for us, you know, for the schools in Rhode Island. But after the, the main meeting was over, she talked for a bit of a time in a side session with the town council. Dr. Hicks was there, and she told Dr. Hicks, you people down here are spending money like drunken sailors. It's because we had all these school, and this is like, so now we're already, we're already going down, we have all these schools open, we still, at that time, we had nine or 10 schools open. If we had been able to manage our money better, and have our per student cost equal to those other towns that are doing okay, we wouldn't have dropped from 10 million to like 5-plus right now. We'd still probably be around 10 million, that's our fault. Now, if you look at, I like to look at GIS, I'm a big GIS fan, the geospatial stuff, you can look, town, South Kingston has it. Okay, but I've looked at the ones for Barrington and East Greenwich. Now, you look at Barrington, Barrington's built out, there's no place to build anymore, the town's done. Their tax base is set, they're never going to get any bigger. East Greenwich, in the western part of East Greenwich, they have a lot of still open space. But what East Greenwich, East Greenwich over the last, since 2010, the last 10 years, East Greenwich's school population has gone up 17%. Now, one of the things they did was they created mini lots, micro lots, 3,000, 4,000, 6, 7,000 square foot lots, in these little developments, and they made sure the sewers got there, so they'd be sewed, so we wouldn't have all these septic systems problems, right? And people are moving into those, I've been up there, people are moving into, they're building houses, moving into those houses, small houses for small families, young families, people are moving to west, to, why wouldn't you want to move to a place like that? Great schools, safe, and affordable homes. We don't have affordable homes anymore in South Kingston, that's the problem. Thank you. One more minute. Most of the homes we've built in the last 30 years are giant homes, 2,000, 3,000, and up square feet, and now we have all this 55 and over stuff. We, our planning board is doing exactly the right thing. If we don't, if we don't figure out a way to attract young families back in this town, we're going to end up being like the St. Petersburg of Rhode Island.
I'm heading out, but I just wanted to say a couple of quick things. Some of what Mr. Beasley says, I agree with, some of what he says, over the course of any evening, I disagree with. I really recommend you have a five-minute time, and I like to talk, you know that, I've been shut down plenty of times over my years. You know, five-minute limit is pretty good, six or seven, you know, gets to 20, 25 minutes, I think it's a bit much. That's whether you agree or disagree. The other thing is, I don't think it was too fair of the speaker, previous to Mr. Beasley, to single out a town employee. There's a lot of conversation in town about the need for affordable housing, there's a lot of community groups doing work on that, and so this isn't just like some rogue person doing things that are like out in the field. So I, I think it's, keep things well-rounded, I know you're doing a good job, thank you so much.
All right. Any other comments from the public? Any comments at the table? I do think we're going to have more discussions with the planning board, have one scheduled February 5th, to talk about many of these issues, about planning, trying to encourage affordable housing development in the town. We definitely encourage the public to come and be a part of that whole process. I know it's a priority for all the people here on the council, and certainly, open space is a priority for us as well, I think, as demonstrated by the town's commitment to it over the years. I have not heard any of these rumors about the planning department, so I can't really speak to those, but I do think that is out of place to, to say those things at the comments opportunity. All right, let's move on to the town manager's report.
I'm going to start here, actually. This is a slide that I'm using for another presentation, and maybe the source of confusion about our, our position on open space. This is a graphic, it's a satellite, undocked, satellite image of the eastern seaboard, and as you can see, every community along the eastern seaboard is lit up like a Christmas tree. From central New Jersey, and the image actually goes a little further north, to southern Maine, there is one dark spot, one place left on the entire northeastern seaboard, where the forest still meets, meets the sea, and that's Charlestown and South Kingston. That is an amazing fact, that is worth cherishing, and, and nobody in town government is saying that's something that should be jettisoned. No one is saying that. Just, no one is saying that it should be jettisoned. It's not true. Thanks. Big red flags here today. Things worth noting, a lot of rain complaints, we've had a lot of flooding, and John's folks are dealing with water being put out onto public rights of way and, and public streets, sidewalks, this kind of thing. DOT ownership of traffic lights, responsibilities for traffic lights, was it a Lincoln lawsuit? Do you happen to remember? Johnson.
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 Yeah, yeah, you mean who owns the state road lights.
Who owns the responsibility for the state road rights? The state is now responsible, has assumed responsibility for their lights, which does have an impact on our LED project. We've got to figure out how to take those lights out of our system and work with the state to make sure that we're not changing their lights now inappropriately. Big item over the public safety communications row, that last red box is a, a box indicating that the other day, we lost the 800 megahertz statewide radio system. We were dark, we were silent for about half an hour, and we had back chatter and open channels across the state for another 30 minutes. So we did have some difficulties with that. I know we've started talking to the council about the need for a new radio strategy and system. I just point that out because this week, that was on display in a big way. With that, I think it is now time for us to hear some good news.
So I think we just wanted to give you an overview for tomorrow night's discussion on the school bonds. The question, the first slide, Rob, the question, I guess, for the school department, because I'm not here to talk about whether or not this, this is right or wrong, I'm just here to give you my financial position on this. So I guess for us, the question, for me, the question is, does the stage two proposed design meet your ed specs? I think, for me, that's a question for the school department, it's not for us to determine whether or not, you know, we have 21st century or modern this and modern that. There's a lot of numbers going around, I think, what I've put together here are slides of each school. You can flip through. They're pretty much in, all the same. What I've provided for each school is the original cost, the recommendations from RGB, the school building committee's approval for consideration, the amount of money that's slated for the capital fund, there's a separate capital fund, there's three pots of money here when we're talking about the bonds. So you have the regular bonds that will be authorized by the voters, there's the capital pay-go section, and then there's a capital fund, a state fund. So I've given, in each one of these slides, I've given you the amount slated for the capital fund, the pay-go fund, and the bond funds for recommendations. The base reimbursement on each one of these bonds is 35%, and we are eligible for 50% of our 35, which is the 17.5, which gets us to the 52.5%. For the high school, the school business, school building committee approved $46 million. Of the $46 million, we are working on health and safety deficiencies, the educational enhancements, consolidations, school safety throughout. At 52.5%, the cost to the taxpayer is $24 million. There's a, I've put the timeframe in there, too, and this goes back to stage one. So they're looking at July of 2020, starting this project, and ending in July of 2022. And in all of these eligible bonuses, these projects, projects must complete construction by December 30th, 2023, otherwise, they're only eligible for 5%. And then I, I've just given you just simple little facts on the square footage of the buildings, and how much of the buildings will be renovated. So this... So this is consistent throughout this PowerPoint presentation. The next slide is Broad Rock. Again, I think what's important here is, one, the priority is the high school, but, two, the school building committee is charged with continual oversight of student population. It's my understanding in the earlier stages of this, if it continues the way it's going, we may potentially not need that addition onto Broad Rock, and you may be faced with a decision on whether to close one of the four elementary schools. But we're not there yet. So these are a lot of things, I think, are up in the air, but they need clarification. The Broad Rock cost to the taxpayer in October of '21 is $9 million. You can just continue on, Rob. Matunic Elementary, again, it's a $2.6 million project, at 52%, it's $1.3 million. West Kingston, again, $4 million project, 2.1% to the taxpayer. The elementary schools' timelines are March 2021 to December of 2021. Peace Dale L., that's a $5 million project, the cost to the taxpayer is 2.9, same timeframe, March of '21 to December of '21. Wakefield Elementary, this is $3.6 million and a $1.8 million cost to the taxpayer. The timeframes on these are of interest because with all this money out there, there's only so many contractors that can do this type of work. So I think being the first ones out front is important because it's going to be those applicants to the tail end of this money where these people are going to make profit, big profits on labor and materials. So I think, you know, as we go through the competitive bidding process, I think it's important to keep that in mind because those who are at the tail end of these projects, they're going to see the spikes in the profit margins between labor and materials. Because like I said, there's only so many contractors that can do this type of construction in this state. You can just continue on, these are just all the information here. Again, this was just something for you to consider for tomorrow night's discussion. This is, I wanted to talk a little bit about debt affordability, and we know that we have the capacity. What we want to talk about is the types of measurements. Jim had asked about the debt ratio to full value. Right now, we're at .3%. Moody's looks at 3% as a recommended target. We're not even going to hit that recommended target in this, in my five-year plan of this. What we have here is a study that was put out by the treasurer's office, magazine's office. This is the debt affordability study that was published in 2017. It measures the municipalities' affordability when issuing debt, and you can see the types of things that they look at, the ratios that they look at, the net direct debt to the full value, which is really your tax, just general tax-supported debt. The overall net debt to full value is our overlapping debt, which is the fire district's debt. So even though it's not tax-supported debt, it's still the same pocket paying that debt. So they call that overlapping debt. And then they also look at the overall debt, which includes your, the tax-supported debt, your overlapping debt, and your enterprise debt. Because again, same person, just different pocket, paying a different fee. So this is what they use as benchmarks, and they have their recommended targets. And I've indicated there where South Kingstown is at that particular time. So you can see that based on the target, we're at .3%, the recommended target is I think, if you scroll down, yeah, I've indicated there, at the highest level, South Kingstown's projected gross debt level as a percentage of valuation will be 1.87%, and that's in year 2022. Year 2022 is the year in which I've budgeted that first principal payment on the first $38 million of bond issuance. And this chart you can find in the capital budget on Section 3, Page 13. Again, some more benchmarks that we use as indicators when we are looking at our affordability, our debt, our capacity, where we are, certain targets, we're measuring ourselves against other communities and where we're at. This is a chart that I've put together with our financial advisors, and basically, I rolled in the 2000, the year 2000, because that's when we had the most debt on the books. That's when we took on the debt for Broad Rock. So during that time, we had $43 million of debt issued on our books. As of 2018, we only have $9 million. You can look at the debt per capita here. It was 1,500 in the year 2000, and now it's 324. So here, this is also another chart that I used in the capital budget when I looked at the impact of this $75 million of new school bonds. And I've used a 1% increase in the assessed valuation. So in 2021, if we bring this debt on, it's 28 cents. It's going to add 28 cents, and the impact of the average homeowner is $98. And in year 2022, it's going to go up 5 cents to 33 cents. The average homeowner will pay $118. So I've done that through the 20, through 2026, the six-year capital plan. I've just indicated there at $75 million, 50% reimbursement, $37.5 million is the cost to the taxpayer. And in 2001, the amount of housing aid that we received, which is when we had the highest amount of debt, we received $926,000. And what we're anticipating in year 2023, because you're always getting your debt service the following year, and since I'm bringing on the principal payment in 2022, our reimbursement in 2023 will be $5,243,000. So you can see the differences in between what we were getting in the year 2000 at 30% reimbursement versus the 52.5% that we will be receiving in 2022. This is a chart that I worked on over the weekend. Somebody had asked, oh, did you measure, you know, what the average levy increase would be, estimated levy increase would be over the full six years? So I put an estimate together, and where we are right now in 2020, as I'm building the operating budget for 2020, we have, I have estimated a tax levy increase of 2.8%. And that is with a 1% increase in the levy on the school department, because that's our most recent submission from them. We've received that, and that's the $54 million worth of taxes. The general fund, I'm finished with, I'm pretty much finished with the 2020 budget, and that's where I am right now. That's an estimate of where I am right now. The only thing that's going to really fluctuate on this is the assessed valuation. I've put an estimate in there of 1%. We are in a revow right now. That is hopeful, that will go up. But overall, we're still going to be looking at an approximate $16.06 on the tax rate. So if you multiply that times the cost of the average homeowner, the tax... You don't need your cheaters at 300%. So the average cost of the homeowner is an additional $155 in 2020. That's what I am estimating right now at this current time. Obviously, that's going to change as we continue through the budget process, but that's where I am right now. Now, I've done the same type of calculation through the six years, bringing in that debt, and I think you can see that we're not, we're not going to hit our 4% tax levy in any of these scenarios. If we stay the course of where we are right now, the school maintains a 2%, 2.5% levy. There's a 3% levy built in the general fund. The debt service is consistent with how this capital budget was put together. And then the other, the other funds are the recreation center and the senior services. Senior services through this scenario is a 4% consistent all six years, and 3.5% for the rec fund. I think these are good numbers to look at and to consider when you're considering where we're going to be in the outer years, if we take on the 75 million, 79 million. Now, I think what you're going to find tomorrow is you're going to find bonds, recommended bonds of 75 million, and then $4 million of pay-go and capital expenses. If you're looking at this scenario, rolling in an additional $4 million in that capital pay-go, I don't think it's affordable as pay-go. This is just an excerpt that I felt was important as you consider the affordability piece of this. This is an issue that we received from Moody's the last time we went to the bond market, which was August of 2017. And they note there, the AA1, which is South Kingstown, the rating reflects the town's moderate-sized tax base, strong wealth and income indicators, healthy financial position, and low debt burden. So I think what they're saying is, you've got the capacity, we've got the wealth, it's up to you to decide what direction you want to go in here. And then finally, the end, last few pages are really just Article 9, the money that the state has approved. What I had a question on this, again, I only, I only put prompts in there for your consideration. There's a lot of discussion about the continued maintenance expenditures. Well, there's three ways to calculate that. So I guess my question was, and I haven't done the calculation, could I? Yes. But my calculation to the school department is, has the calculation been done to determine the least expensive method for accounting for the maintenance operations, the continued maintenance operations? So I think that's a question. And then, you know, I put little questions in there for your consideration when you're discussing this with the architect tomorrow. But it's not my position to, you know, I just wanted to give you a financial overview in where I believe we are with this project.
Trish, I got a question for you. Now, I believe in previous work sessions you had stated that from what you're working with now, you project that the bonds will have a 20-year maturity. Why not extend that to a 30-year maturity to reduce the debt service costs?
We could. We've never done it. I don't know. I'd have to talk with the financial advisors to see how the rating agencies would look at that, because we've continued to issue debt over 20 years. And most of these projects, obviously, they, we want to make sure they extend the 20-year useful life. Some of them might be a 20-year useful life, some of the projects that we're doing. And certainly, if it's a 20-year life, you don't want to issue debt for 30 years. So I'd like to be consistent when we go to the bond market, that the rating agencies say, this is the way that they've always issued their debt over 20 years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before you go, Trish, the contingency, the 3%, that's not an escrow. Someone before labeled it, someone at the podium labels that 3% fund an escrow fund.
We're talking about the maintenance?
Maintenance. It's not an escrow, it's an operating.
It's an operating, yeah.
Okay.
And I mean, the reports are 110 million. We're never going to do all the projects that these reports put out because we could never afford them. I mean, we, there's a lot of work that needs to be done here in the town hall, and we're going to do it when we have the money for it. So even if we issue the 75 million, this doesn't mean in 10 years from now, you're not going to be faced with another $10, $15 million. The fact of the matter is, the school has never come to you with this kind of bond for these buildings. And I think now you're in a place where the work needs to be done, and we need to figure out how we're going to pay for it, how it's affordable.
Thank you.
So that brings us to appointments tonight. I think there might be a reappointment, but maybe also a new appointment. Feel good about Mr. Vogel?
I'll make a resolution to appoint James Vogel to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee for a term to expire July of 19, is that right? I think for one of the vacant terms, there's, we have some we haven't filled yet.
That's, we like appointed all the first ones at once, right?
Yeah.
But this is a whole new person, right?
So then, are they all up this July?
Okay. Okay. Well, that's my resolution, that's my motion.
Second. All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries unanimously.
We talked last time about the Library Board of Trustees, and we had a couple of applicants that we had already interviewed. I don't know if anybody has a feeling. I went back and listened to the interviews and...
Did... And did you, could you reach out to them to see if they were still interested, or no? Okay. Nice. Wait. Was that the only one?
No, we got a couple more. So, resolution to reappoint Leslie Perini to the trustees of South Kingstown School Funds for a term to expire June 2023.
I'll second that.
So moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. And then a resolution to reappoint, hmm, John Bernato and Tom Daniels to the Zoning Board of Review for terms to expire March of 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
So moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I think that's it.
All right. On to new business. 14B is a resolution authorizing a mutual aid agreement for non-emergency police power with the town of Richmond. Not going to bother reading that. Do we hear any comment on this? This is similar to what we did last meeting with Charlestown, I believe.
That's right. We're in the process of updating all of our mutual aid agreements.
Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve 14B.
Second.
So moved. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries unanimously. And that does it. At this point, I'd, can you give us...
You'd need a motion to convene into executive session pursuant to 4246-5A1 regarding performance, character, physical, mental health involving Bryant de Cruz. Notice was provided.
Do I hear a motion?
What Mike said.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
So moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you for coming, everybody. See you tomorrow.
Very well done. Oh, don't even.